We don't get any answers. What are these laws? That ordinance number five of two thousand fourteen has broken? I, I don't understand. I've been online for months and months and months looking at the laws. I can't find any that tell me so. Also, how was it determined that the two thousand fourteen ordinance limits the land available for oil and gas and extraction more than intended? Who, who made that decision and based on what criteria? We'd love to hear some answers. We don't get any. I don't think that's asking too much for the community. But what I sort of focused on was in this new ordinance, I noticed that section G was taken out of it. Section G dealt with pre-drilling, getting a survey of water, and it didn't say anything about soil. But here's what I did. I got online and I looked and I searched and everything, and after educating myself, I didn't listen to anybody else, I educated myself. And concerning the possible contamination of water and soil related to fracking, I came to realize that these parts of ordinance number five of two thousand fourteen, which dealt with pre-drilling and post-hydroic fracturing and baseline water and soil survey requirements, were quite good in protecting the, the health and welfare of the people of this community. They're excellent. I found no laws. I talked to people in the DEP. I perused the state and federal laws and regulations, and I concluded that the planning commissioners and the township supervisors are well within your right to include water and soil survey requirements as was in ordinance number five of two thousand fourteen. There's nothing that says you can't do that. The ordinance approved by the supervisors on December twenty first, two thousand fifteen, that contained that section G that I mentioned before, and you might be addressing that tonight. I can't remember, but that was left out completely. There's nothing in there about water and soil. There is no baseline requirements that the people of this community can look at if they have a problem. They have no defense, none. They had the mercy of the operators. So I would ask you to put back sections E and F, which are pages five and seven of ordinance number five of two thousand fourteen, to protect the health and welfare of the people of this community. I have copies of that attached. I also have some other comments attached at the end. Thank you.
The only thing left here is we have something from Carrie. Bill, would you like to present this for Carrie?
She asked, actually asked if one of the township officials would read it, please. I, I offered to, and she specifically asked that one of you do.
All right, Paul. The first word that says that the PA Supreme Court decision was held to be non-binding. Can you show me that? Words have been found non-binding. The PEDF case, which is land use decision, has currently been considered by the Supreme Court, but the Commonwealth Court, a blank decision on act thirteen, which was upheld by the Supreme Court's black and white when it comes to zone. You stated in your draft ordinance that ordinance number five, two thousand fourteen, is more restrictive than permitted by law. Can you show me the law that says our ordinance cannot be more restrictive? As far as land use, what do you consider unconventional gas drilling? Is it commercial? Is it residential? Is it agriculture? Is it educational institution? Is it industrial? If you had to pick one, what would you say it is? The answer is it's industrial, so why isn't it being treated as industrial? Unconventional gas drilling is an industrial process and belongs in industrial zone. Why not include one of our industrial zones? Why not expand one of our industrial zones to accommodate this development? If you allow industrial zone and non-industrial areas, you'll eventually run into problems because one day another industry or commercial entity is wanting to seek a variance. Let's say also get you to rewrite the ordinance to accommodate them. Say I own a hundred and fifty acres in an ag zone, and Amazon wants to buy to put in a distribution center, you are just going to amend the ordinance to accommodate them. But what if a zinc smelting company wanted to buy it for their operation? We're going to allow that in agricultural zones as well. Finally, about a month ago, I asked some friends of mine who are familiar with the unconventional gas drilling in PA if they knew of any compressor stations that were not enclosed. Someone suggested I contact a woman named Pam Judy from Cumberland Township, Green County. I finally spoke with her today and have a copy of her story published by Earthworks. Cumberland Towny, Green County. Cumberland Township, Green County has been the top recipient for the state impact fee in the last two years. In two thousand nine, Energy Corporation of America built a compressor station seven hundred and eighty feet from her, still early in the Marcellus shale boom. And Pam fought with them for two years before they agreed to enclose the compressor station. Two years. Wanted me to tell you that while enclosing the building did help with the noise, the building had several large doors which are often open due to heat buildup in the building. When the doors are open, which even occurs in the winter, noise is worse. Pam lives in the most heavily drilled township in the state, and she does not know of any, know of any compressor stations that are not enclosed. Can you show me a compressor station in the state of Pennsylvania that's not enclosed? I respectfully ask that you address my questions. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I actually have a question for previous speaker, if I may.
Okay.
To Dr. Hickman. There's a ton of Gs in the two thousand fifteen ordinance. Which G in particular are you referring to?
Which, which?
G.
No, I was referring to G. It's in the December twenty first.
Two thousand fifteen ordinance. Which G? There's eighty-seven bazillion Gs.
In two thousand fifteen?
Give me a page number, please.
Page eight?
Page eight. Thank you.
Yeah, it's on the first page, Jay. Down at the bottom.
Oh, sorry, but... That just says copies of the applicant's ESCGP two application. But I don't know if you're working off a different version. I don't, I can't figure out what you're referring to because I, I don't think it was in the two thousand fifteen ordinance. That's two thousand fourteen, right.
No, this is two thousand fifteen.
Here's page eight, two thousand fifteen.
No, this is fourteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have a G in yours?
Well, I have lots of Gs, so it's a G, not a J. But it's just a copy of the ESCGP two, which I don't think is what you're talking about.
Are you looking at the Dallas Hartman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
That's not the same one?
That's, that's Hartman's proposed amendments.
Okay, then I haven't seen that one, what came out.
This is what was passed originally.
Okay.
So what you're referring to is something that Dallas Hartman proposed. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
So it was not in the original ordinance?
It was not in the two thousand fifteen ordinance.
Anybody else have any questions?
There's a copy list for everybody.
I speak for Janice David.
What's that?
Janice David, always very funny to give back.
Anybody have any?
A few other things by way of background. As you directed, again, this is back before us because the supervisors sent it back on the advice of the solicitor, as I understand it. When he and I met, as you directed, we found some typos. And he felt like we should correct them, not have the supervisors correct them. And he's back there, so he can correct me if I get this wrong.
You've got it right so far.
I also noticed, well, he made one suggestion, and I noticed an inconsistency that I had thought about at our last meeting, and then in the rush of the end, it got late and I forgot about it. And so I'd like to propose things about both of those in a minute. But just so we're all together and on the record, my understanding is the solicitor sent the draft to several attorneys, to Mr. Lucas, to Angelo Pape?
Yes, sir.
To Mahoney, who is representing the insurance company with regard to township's lawsuit, to McNichol and Hartman. You've seen the response from Mr. Lucas. You've seen the response from Mr. Mahoney. That was an email that I forwarded to you. Mr. McNichol and Mr. Hartman did not respond formally, to my knowledge, nor did Mr. Pape, as far as I know. You also have gotten some brief comments from two of the supervisors that came to me by email and that I sent one to you. The solicitor told me earlier tonight that he is comfortable with the legality of what we have and with defending it. So that's the background I know. My suggestion is, if you'll indulge me, that we try to fix the drafting slash typo things, so we're all together. I would ask to be able to address what I meant to address at the last meeting and forgot because I think we have two contradictions in the ordinance that we had a minimum have to fix. And then we can address whatever else anybody wants to address.
Point of clarification, John Mahoney. So we've had three lawyers look at this, basically Lucas, Parata, and Mahoney. I know the two. Who's, who's Mahoney exactly? And what's his?
He is the attorney for the insurance company that is... He is, that is defending the township with regard to lawsuit.
Okay, just... Why would we take input from him?
That is the extent of what I know. You would have to ask the solicitor if you want to know any more about it.
He's an attorney. He represents the insurance exchange. He represents the township's interest in the lawsuit, and by any means, he has the right to comment in that regard with his position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if we could deal with the typos first and or drafting things, just so we get all of those cleaned up and, or at least from the same starting point. And I have two things that aren't on there that I found. Remember last time I said I did not have the time or the acumen with Word, which I think is a tool of the devil anyway, to get the thing in order? And so I, the solicitor said he would take that on. So it's my recommendation that we, so we're all together, that we work off the copy that he sent that's reformatted, that if you add a colored printer, has some things highlighted in yellow. That way, we're all on the same pages, all on the same lines. We're all clear on what we're talking about.
Okay, I got that. That's the one you sent out this morning, or the other day, yesterday, whenever it was?
Uh, like this week.
Okay. The one you brought out to me, Jay?
That's correct.
Yeah. Just, I have one right here that's a draft that says ordinance number one. It has the one on it, whereas the one you sent out doesn't. And it's got the setbacks in, in a box, which I think is quite good.
I have no idea where that came from.
Yeah, that's what I, I have no idea either. Where did it come from? I think it came from your office, perhaps.
One of my assistants, I can't take credit for.
When did that come out?
Excuse me?
When did that come out? Because I don't have it. But then you sent me other things that I never got.
So I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is materially, there's no difference between these two, other than the formatting?
But for the formatting, and I think the number, which you noted correctly.
Okay, okay. Because like on this first page, there's no number on that one.
That's correct.
And there's thirteen pages on this one, and she's got thirteen of thirteen? That's on her?
Yeah, we didn't make, we did not make any content changes in the formatting of it, other than...
Okay, and this one has fourteen pages, just because there's a bit of a run over, but okay. That, that's it then, that's?
That's, that's the extent of it.
Does anybody need a copy?
Pardon? Well, we're going to get utterly confused if we're not all working off the same one.
Right, so we got it right. I think it's...
And I, I would propose we work off the one that had the yellow because that's the one all of us have.
And it says draft. It says March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen draft?
And that way, and I, it's my understanding that this was the solicitor's point. He wants us to fix all the typos by formal action. And so if that's what we're doing, we need to deal with them here. So I'll try to go quickly through these. On page one, it should be ordinance number one. And I'm, I am just moving Roman numeral one right now.
Okay.
Okay, so on page one, it should say ordinance number one.
Yep.
Odd numbered pages need page numbers.
You don't want to put a one, two, three, four?
Right now on the draft, only the even numbered pages have page numbers. I don't know why. I haven't been successful at fixing it. It's just so there's no question.
That's your, that's your word problem.
I don't know. It's come up wherever I've tried to print.
Okay.
On, in the therefore, on page two, after the word two thousand fourteen, it should say an ordinance number three of two thousand fifteen.
What did it say, four?
It says what's right there. It just said ordinance number five of two thousand fourteen, next page.
Okay, so you're going to call this, where is it again, Jay?
Ordinance number three of two thousand fifteen. So the point is, we're recommending the repeal of both ordinance five of two thousand fourteen and ordinance three of two thousand fifteen.
Are you going to put them both in there?
Yes. So it would read that ordinance five of two thousand fourteen and ordinance three of two thousand fifteen be repealed. Okay?
Yep, got you.
On page four, and maybe we'll just fix it, but just so there's no question, we need to fix the page break, and that will change the patination afterwards. It won't change it tonight, but it'll change it in the future. For some reason, online at least, there's a weird page break.
Okay.
On page four, after it says delete eight hundred twenty-one point two.
Okay. In section eight hundred twenty-one point one A, customarily live or work, that's a material, that's a content change, I tell you this.
No, I don't even, if it's there, it's just because there's a space, an extra space.
Okay, and it came out yellow.
Yeah, he highlighted some things he didn't mean to.
Fair enough, okay.
All right, and I'm not moving all the highlighting. I'm just moving what's on the paper.
Right.
On page seven.
How about page five?
What about page five? I'm not moving anything on page five.
Uh, part A at the bottom.
I'm not moving anything on page five right now.
Okay, that's not a typo then. That's, that's a material change, that's a content change.
Maybe.
Okay.
I'm not taking a chance, so...
Okay, fair enough.
I'll get to that in a minute. Page seven. The very top line, it should be citing instead of sitting, there's an extra T.
Ah, I was looking for that. Couldn't find it. Very good.
on page eight, the very first line of text under number one, the, what looks like an I in italic should be a slash. That's not on what the paper. I just found that. That's one of the two I just found.
That's correct.
So it says the well site and I or its operation, the I should be a slash.
Okay, timeout for one second. I've got two versions here. I want to catch up to you on my other one because I've marked up some of these things too, and there's some... Page six. Okay, it's not there. Fair enough. One more second. Okay, you're on page eight. Go ahead.
Under E one, it says the well site and I or its operation. That I is supposed to be a slash.
Correct.
When it got reformatted, that slash turned in when italicized I. Now, see, you've got a different version again, so it may or may not have these. What was not the yellow? But this is at the top of page eight, which says E well site.
On bottom seven.
Okay? On page nine, under amendment thirteen, the first B should be an A.
Ah, correct. Good eye, missed that one.
Well, that's actually one you emailed about, Fred. So I didn't miss it.
I didn't catch it the second time.
On page nine, also in amendment thirteen, there are three instances of the phrase special exception. All three should be changed to conditional use.
Okay, let's see, one, two.
Finally got mad and did a word search. Didn't miss anymore.
Where's the third one?
You see where township engineer is yellow?
Yep, there it is. I got it.
He missed, and you got it supposed to be. So all three of those need to be changed to conditional use.
Yep, got it.
On page ten, under the third line down where it says county courthouse.
Yep.
It should say Lawrence County Government Center. We don't want them not to know who they are. And also further down, where you see a capital B, somehow the word A got dropped out. So it should say AMAP showing.
Where at?
Further down that page, it says B.
B, yeah.
It's missing the A.
Well done.
Page eleven, under eight hundred twenty-one A four, the fifth line down, it should say Township Planning Commission instead of Committee. Page thirteen, eight hundred twenty-one A point six. There's, I think, just one instance of special exception that should be changed to conditional use. It's under B.
What page, John? Where at?
Under B. The one, two, three, one, two, three, four, fifth line down.
Part B, B reimbursement?
Yep.
Ah, there it is.
Any special ask for a call for in the special exception?
You have conditional use right above it and special exception right below it.
And then the final part of this proposed amendment is that we drop in the separability clause that the solicitor drafted at our request as a new amendment fourteen. Because all these are set up as a series of amendments, and I believe the last number is thirteen. So this would be the fourteenth amendment.
Let's get that right. You can't put it in as, as an E, A, B, C, D, E? Under miscellaneous?
It's not really miscellaneous per se.
Yeah, right, okay.
It's a completely new...
Yeah. I agree.
I'm, I'm sorry, it would be number fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, thank you. There you go.
Number fifteen.
That's right, fifteen.
So I move all that.
I'll second.
A little motion in seconds to check all these typos, etc. All in favor of signing off on the sand right?
Aye. Aye. I'm going to count them up.
Anybody opposed?
I'm for it, so let's count them up. How many are there?
I don't know what you mean, Fred, and it depends on how you want to count them. It's everything on my page.
I know. How many you got? How many changes, how many corrections?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Or if you want to count the three separate ones, it would be fifteen. We're pressing the envelope. You expect me to do a higher map like that? That's Hickman's problem. They're back there ignoring me. That's good, I can insult them with impunity. Okay, we're all good on that?
I get twelve, Jay. Sorry, count down. One, two. All right, I must have missed one. I'll go with you.
Okay.
Fair enough.
All right, then I'll just do these as separate amendments under Roman numeral two. First on page five, and this is one the solicitor suggested, that we change where it says down at the bottom under number nine, that we change borough council members where they're representatives to simply be borough representatives.
What page are you on? Just borough, okay, just borough, borough representatives, right?
Right. And his feeling is that's cleaner, the borough can appoint whoever they want.
Okay. No problem.
So I move that.
One second, Matt.
Hey, we have a motion to change borough council members to the representatives to just borough representatives. Want a sec?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I have.
All right, now, page twelve. This is the more substantive that addresses some of the comments of the race tonight. It hit me as we were going through it last time, and then, as I say, I forgot about it. On page twelve, under B, which starts on the previous page, three and four, in my judgment, are contradictory at two levels. May I speak before I make a motion? Number one, three says that putting something in a building where sound muffling structure is a possible condition that can be imposed. Four then says compressor central stations and compressor transmission stations must be enclosed. Those two can't be together. One of them is wrong.
Right, and then, and?
We, we could in theory, if I can just speak and I'll make a motion illegally, we could in theory make number three tied to well site compressors, but I don't think that's the... but I don't think that's the way to go. The second problem is number four says they have to be in a soundproofed building, but we say in other places that they can have sixty decibels of sound at the property line, which seems incompatible with soundproof.
Right.
So my motion is, what's there on the page, that we delete number three, that in number four, we change compressor central stations and compressor transmission stations to compressor stations, and we change soundproof to sound muffling. That's my motion.
And you want it to be a shell.
If there's a second, I can speak to it more.
I'll second.
What does muffling, um, how many, how many decibels sound would that be, to consider a muffler?
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Number four, compressor stations are to be enclosed in a sound muffling structure equipped with a system of filters which filter, pardon?
Says building.
Building, correct, I'm sorry, you're right. Equipped with a, a system of filters which filter the emissions associated with compressors per DEP EPA regulations, whichever are more restrictive. Then it says, a waiver to these requirements may be granted only if the applicant or operator can demonstrate that an alternative will provide protection of the health, safety, welfare, this isn't a committee that is equal to or better than a mandate, what's mandated by the, by this provision.
That's correct.
Okay, so what we're saying is, you start out with a building, uh, that muffles sound, that is in compliance with their sixty decibels.
That's correct, at the property line.
At the property line.
That's correct.
And if it can be demonstrated to our satisfaction, I use the supervisors, I take it, or is it gonna come to this committee first?
Well, we'd have to make a recommendation, because these are all conditional uses, plus this would be a land...
So it's gonna come to us first. A waiver of these requirements may be granted only if the applicant or operator can demonstrate that an alternative will provide protection.
Yep.
What's, what's, what would constitute demonstration of? Or would we have to observe it when we see it?
We're saying that burden of proof, it seems to me, my recommendation is that burden of proof is on the applicant. They have to convince the township.
Meaning us.
Well, ultimately meaning the supervisor.
Us first and the supervisor.
Recommendation to them. The point is, the norm is, this would require that they be in a building, and there would have to be some showing that demonstrates the township's satisfaction, why not? I mean, I could imagine if we had a...
Depends on the spot.
Incredibly large parcel of land, and nobody could possibly see or hear it.
Yeah.
That might be a reason, I'm not sure we have any such parcels in the township. But it seems to me that the default ought to be that they're in buildings, it seems to me the default ought to be that they're filtered, and it seems to me the default ought to be that they're at least sound muffling, even recognizing that they've gotta meet the decibel levels. It was second.
I guess we discussed this before, but the only alternative would be to start out with no requirement for a building, but to state very clearly that a building could be imposed per the wishes of the supervisors.
I, I agree that that would be a legal position, potentially. I think the burden of proof should go the other way here. Were exactly the reasons we noted in there.
That'll require a...
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
No opposed.
Those were the things that I had based on last time, um, and the comments we had up to last time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, how you want it to proceed from here? Do you wanna go page by page again, or do you wanna just...
Why don't we go attorney by attorney?
Attorney by attorney?
Huh?
Well, I don't think it's just attorneys, we've had comments from the patrons here tonight, too.
We do have a couple of comments from the supervisors, too.
Correct.
Page, page by page, probably makes sense, I suppose.
What do you want to do with the supervisor? It's not, it's not very short, and you're...
Oh, we have comments from the supervisors. My list had changed. Compressor stations are in buildings. Fallowing?
I think that's follow.
Follow, uh, follow state requirements on site, on setbacks. Water testing.
By who, for what? And how far?
How far for well sites. This is apparently from the supervisors, correct? Okay.
Okay, so the compressor station in the building, we've done that, basically, we started out with that as the upfront approach. And the requirements for setbacks are state requirements, more or less, plus, plus higher ones on our part.
Says follow the state, request follow the state.
That would lessen it.
So does he mean lessen it to the state?
I know nothing beyond what's written.
I don't either, but I would assume that he, he's saying at least follow the state, and we've done that, and then so. And when it comes to the water testing, uh, basically, it's pretty clear, uh, they're gonna test, uh, the test results are begun to each landowner, um, and basically, if a landowner, after the drilling's done, within the twelve month period, so wishes, they can go to the state and have the state test the water, and compare it to, uh, what, what was the baseline before the drilling began. And as far as what they're gonna test for, um, the state's not specific.
Okay, that's not in the draft that I got from the township?
What's not?
That, about water testing?
No, it's not in there.
Oh, okay, absolutely, I thought you were saying that...
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm responding to the water testing for his, his request.
I thought you were saying there's something in here about water testing.
No, there's not, not in there.
Okay.
So, there's a reason that, that the state doesn't include any specificity about exactly what the test for, and that means that basically, you can come in the door with anything, uh, you claim is a pollutant, and if, I guess the state agrees with that, then it's a remedy that falls upon, the burden of the remedy falls upon the draw, to deal with it. So he pretty much has to test for everything, is the bottom line.
Mr. Chairman, just a, a point of order, if I may. Um, when, when you're speaking to the supervisors collectively, my understanding that individual comments were sent, not from the supervisors as a whole, but from, from two of the supervisors, I just don't want anyone to cast any aspersions that the Sunshine Law was violated in the preparation of any of those documents, so...
Fair enough. Yeah, this was from Dave.
Oh, that was...
That's from Dave, which is a separate one.
Okay.
And, do you wanna look real quick?
Let me read the second, let me read the second comment from the supervisors.
Right.
Lou, I have started looking over the ordinance, here is a start to my list, compressor stations in a building. I would like to see a list from Hill Corp on what they test for in water, and how far, and how far do they test? That's from Tracy.
Yeah.
Same basic...
Same basic answer, that, that, the test, how far do they test, I think she's talking about the distance, and specifically, the state law is twenty-five hundred feet from the site of a well. And, uh, there was a gentleman in here, one of our meetings, uh, Wayne, Wayne, whoever, he said, basically, they go three thousand feet, Hill Corp. So they go beyond the state's twenty-five hundred requirement. And again, what they test for is basically everything. So, that's that. To answer this question. That's in the record, maybe.
I'm sorry, you wanted me to put something in the...
Well, I'm, I'm, just, how about, how about make a note that we responded to their questions?
I, I think if you want me to make a note like that, somebody needs to make a motion, so I know exactly what I'm supposed to write down.
I believe that we read the two individual supervisors' email comments to us regarding whether that's a new ordinance.
Oh, okay, I'll second that.
All in favor of accepting the comments?
Aye.
And then opposed?
Okay, then we have, um, Mr. Perata.
Can I just please?
And Jay, do you, or do you want me to do it?
Um, what are you after, Fred?
Well, I'm just, there were issues that he wrote, they were content, or not content, but, um, substance of the...
I think the only one was the whereas is that we haven't addressed.
That was the other guy.
I...
I made a comment about the whereas is, uh, was by Kirk, and also, I think I raised the, uh, the issue concerning the confliction of the language that we previously discussed.
Right, what you, not like it was not what you meant to highlight about that, though, correct? You didn't have a comment?
No, I just wanted to make sure that was drawn to your attention, which you addressed tonight.
But we have Mr. Mahoney here, yeah. Want to read what he says? Okay. Says, "I've already suggested all the whereas is clauses be deleted. Uh, if you feel some of them must remain rigid, delete the first and last whereas clause on page one. Uh, the first mentioning Robinson Township, and the other one indicating the ordinance number five, two thousand fourteen, is more restrictive than permitted by law and is currently in force." So basically, he's suggesting that there's, this document as an ordinance has no whereas is in it whatsoever, and if we wanna leave some whereas is in it, you take out the first one and the last one on page one. Maybe our solicitor could comment on that, 'cause I don't have a clue why.
In, in his explanation to me, he just indicated he thought it would be more cleaner, uh, a more, uh, appealing document. And talking with, uh, with Jay on, on my way here this evening, we maybe thought if you, you were hard set on including that information, to potentially put it in a, a footnote, but, you know, Robinson Township, you know, you can make arguments all different directions as to what the state of the law is, so...
So, and I guess he takes, my, my sense is, his, his exception to having this referenced is, is a legal liability force in some way?
I just think he, he makes a cleaner document, um...
Without the reference.
Yeah, listen, two hundred dollars in a complaint, anybody can sue anyone. So, I mean, that, that's really not the, the concern from his standpoint. Because I, I questioned the same thing with him, and that's, you know, what his response was, but if, if you're hard pressed to keep it in there, potentially, we could address it as a footnote somewhere in the document, but, um...
Well, rather than footnote, I'd just assume, I'd just...
I mean it.
Well, first than the last one, I would. Want to make a motion? I think it's cleaner just to get rid of it, if, if that's the intent, rather than make a footnote of it.
I'll move that.
I'll move that.
All right, I'll move that we delete, uh, the first whereas on page one and the last whereas on page one.
I'll second that. On page one.
That would be the one that's whereas, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision, and the one that whereas, number two thousand five.
Is more restrictive.
Okay, so, we wanna eliminate that, those two. All in favor of eliminating those two?
Well, why? If we're buying this argument, why not get rid of all of them?
Yeah, 'cause number two is actually, we could probably win that one, too, you know, before, I mean, and...
And start, we started off with, what do you do then, start it off with now therefore?
Um, we would probably just eliminate the now therefore, and just say the Wilmington Township Supervisors.
Your day.
What we could do is simply say, because there have been large changes in technology since the nineteen seventy-five ordinance, and therefore, the ordinance needs to be updated, now therefore.
How about just in an attempt to update the...
Don't use the word attack.
In, in, in effort, to update. Whatever. Why don't we just start with the, this do or dain?
The Wilmington Township do or dain, fair enough, okay, so...
I think the last wording is the good one.
Okay, so, can I revise my motion?
Yeah.
I'll move that we eliminate all whereas is, and the words now therefore, on page two.
I'll second that.
And change the, uh, T to a capital.
Capital, right.
Post, uh, that was second? We were motioning second to eliminate all the whereas is up through the word, uh, therefore, and change the first letter of the word th to a capital. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed?
All we have.
I, I believe we got through everything on that list. I have another motion I wanna try, but I, I just wanna make sure that we didn't miss anything that was on the list.
You mean on your original list to go with?
Well, on the list that Lou sent back, and yes, all of those things, I think we dealt with everything.
Okay.
I assume if there are any more obvious typos, those can be changed by the drafter, slashes at her eyes, and...
If, if, if you're so inclined to make a motion to that effect...
Um, well, before we do, I'm gonna put my head in the grinder. Um, I'm gonna make a motion, I recognize it's already, I moved it, and it was not seconded, but I'm gonna move it again, and you all can do what you want in later the comments tonight. I do move, and I will read all of this if you want, um, you had it right in a couple meetings ago, that we amend eight hundred twenty-one point five, adding a new section G dealing with what?